Mr. Cameron, Mr. Bowman, Ms. Kelly, here. Mr. Beasley, Mr. Peters, Mr. Swatter.
Here.
Pledge to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. You all had an opportunity to read through the minutes, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'd move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron, Mr. Bowman, Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, Mr. Peters, Mr. Swatter, aye.
Excellent, thank you. This is the visitors' communications portion. Is there anyone that would like to address council on any subject? If so, please step forward, state your name and address, and what you'd like to chat about.
My name is Joe Powers, and I live at 34 Overlook Drive, Fort Thomas, Kentucky. I have a couple questions. Last week, at the bottom of our street where it meets the highway, we had about sheet ice this wide, and about that thick. And nobody knows what happened, and it never got taken care of, basically. And there were possibilities, a couple of them almost had accidents down there. And I was wondering, what happened? Is it going to occur again? Because I know about a year ago, the stores were redone down there in the dip and that, and I wonder, did that cause what I'm telling you now?
I have no idea, but that's interesting, because I know that that whole area got redone to prevent that kind of problem. Are you aware of that, Ron?
Actually, I saw it personally, just by traversing through the area. Yeah, it was thick, and it wasn't too far out of the curb, but it was away from the curb.
Well, it got wider eventually.
Yeah, and to date, I'm not aware that we've had that issue since they redid the work. So I'm not sure it's related to that, and quite frankly, it shouldn't be related to that at all. Because that condition was improved from what it was previously. The exception being that there is now a curb line. So if it is holding any type of water, it would actually hold it in the street. It is a state route, so we would be dealing with the Kentucky Department of Transportation to address any ongoing problem there. So we'll make sure that we have contact with them and relate it to them. I'm not certain that Tim has had that conversation with them yet or not.
Yeah, well, you know, when it did start going away by itself, I went down, I turned right, but looking over to the left, there was water coming down the highway from like, you know, what used to be the Monument Company there. And the thought ran through my mind, you know, they redone that whole place. Is there water roof now running down, out the front maybe, and down towards us? You know, in the dip there? But it, you know, if I came from the south and turned in there, you turn in, you hit that ice, and you just slide right across. And if you're going out the other way, you got partway out, and then you're spinning. And anyway, I, and the other part of the question is, I guess it's been 10, 12 years ago. Everybody on the street tried and tried for years to get a traffic light down there with no success, and it's getting worse and worse and worse. And my question is, you know, I keep thinking, okay, entering there, they put a traffic light on the highway at Saint Teresa Church where the underpass is. I'm sure you know where that's at, and probably hardly anybody uses the thing. We used to have a crossing guard there when I went to school there, and the kids went across the highway or underneath the tunnel. Is there any possibility that maybe we could get that light moved up to our street? Or if so, who would I check with?
Well, again, as Ron mentioned, it's the state, so they would be responsible for that. That's probably not very likely, however, I don't, and I don't know if there's a way to do any timing between different lights that would allow a break in traffic between the lights, say, at 471 and at the bottom of Highland, so that there was some kind of delay in between. I don't know if that's a possibility, but...
I doubt it, because, you know, there's so many different arrows and this and that down at Fort, well, Muckaroo there, I call it.
Well, that's why the ice is there, so you don't need the light. So when you come down, you hit the ice, zoom right out real fast.
Okay. When I have an accident, I'll put that on.
That was a joke, sorry.
One last thing. Do you think, I don't know if you know, the Highway Department of State? I happen to know that, I guess he's top man right now pretty well, Mr. Jaeger, or not Jaeger.
It is Jaeger.
It's Bob Jaeger.
Jaeger. Do you think if we went and talked to him, maybe he's got enough clout in the area that...
Well, certainly, I think both of those items can be addressed with Bob on, as far as the ice problem and what's there. And to suggest that they look at it for potential for traffic control, absolutely.
Yeah, but we're, it's getting to the point, if I want to go south, and not only me, other people on the street, we go north, go into South Gate, turn around, and go the other way.
Turn around, yeah.
It's bad. Anyway, that's it, and appreciate your time.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, and we'll definitely get...
We'll initiate that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address council on any issues? All right, then, thank you. Moving right along to reports of officers. Fire Department monthly report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Really don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was mailed in your packets. Just wanted to point out that we did our last with shift one, Captain Lump Schiff, who's on today, although some of those faces have changed at the beginning of 18. Did our last ride along to school, a ride to school on a fire truck for Parker Burns and his friend on December the 14th, and that was fun, as always, and looking forward to this year. Already was contacted by Fort Thomas Schools for their big fundraiser to do another one of those silent auctions, so we'll certainly do that. But again, really don't have anything to add to the monthly report. December, looking forward to the new year here in 18, and we'll have some of those numbers that I know Captain Lump is working on as we progress through the first of the year here, for you guys to know as far as that. Look like we're about 50 runs up from last year. So a little bit up from last year. Be glad to field any questions the council may have.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions?
Lieutenant Stephen Paul.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall, vote please.
Mr. Cameron, Mr. Bowman, Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, aye. Mr. Peters, aye. Mr. Swatter, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Police Department monthly report. Sergeant Hunt?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just touch on a couple things real quick of the monthly report. Last year, every year, I'm sorry, last month, every year, we have the Cops and Kids Program. Fort Thomas always has a big showing there. We're very proud of our officers. Our wives are starting to go with us now, only because little girls don't like to shop with men in uniform. So the wives help out a lot when we get, especially, we had 55 kids this year. Each got 300 bucks to spend. You do the math, that's about $17,000. That money's raised throughout the year, especially the golf outing, stuff like that. Councilman Beasley played in the golf outing. So it's a good time, we love it every year. Recruit Holland is doing well in FTO. Recruit Belucci is due to graduate January 26th. He starts the 28th in his FTO program. We're looking forward to getting him out. And actually, tonight, Recruit Holland told us that he's going to choose second shift, so you guys will probably see him out and about on his own here shortly, in the next couple months. Officer Laffin received the Governor's Impaired Driving Award, otherwise known as the DUI Award. He got the most DUIs of the department for the year, and he went down for luncheon down to the state. And finally, scams are still going around. We just had a lady, he had hit for six grand on IRS scam. If it sounds like it's a bunch of bogus stuff, it probably is. The IRS is never going to ask anybody for their personal information over the phone. They're probably going to send certified mail and certified letters. All that stuff is still going on, and please, as always, lock your doors. We got about five streets hit last night with probably 20 cars going through, and every single one of them were unlocked. The weather doesn't keep these guys away. So just remember, please lock your doors, pass along to your friends and family. And with that, I'll close it to any questions from council, if they have any.
That's a great point about the weather, because I actually thought that today. It's so-called, nobody's going to bother you.
We probably had 20 cars, people calling in with, they said footsteps were all around their houses, their cars. We had a house on Broadview over the weekend where it was actually a police officer's home from Newport. His house was forced open, the garage door was forced open, and they're caught on camera doing it.
Oh, my gosh.
So the weather's not keeping anybody away.
Oh, my gosh. Any questions?
Lieutenant Stephen Paul.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall, vote please.
Mr. Cameron, aye. Mr. Bowman, aye. Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, aye. Mr. Peters, aye. Mr. Swatter, aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, City Administrator's report.
Okay, I just had a couple of items. One is updating the Visioning Community Plan. Yes. We've had great participation. In fact, the last meeting that I attended was last Monday. I think we had 15 or 17 people across the hall for one of our committee meetings. So they're still well-attended. We're still seeking individuals to engage and become part of it. As you all know from being involved yourselves, we're kind of through that existing conditions, awareness phase, and there's a lot of completion of goals and objectives that has taken place in the last 30 days. So our public meeting, which is really important, all of that information will be shared at the community center on Wednesday, the 24th, which is next Wednesday. So all of those committees will be in attendance. The public is welcome to be there. We encourage everybody to not only come and share what part you've had in the committees you've had, but also give input and feedback to the other committees, if you haven't had an occasion to see what our work has resulted with. And at the same time, there'll be some sharing of the community survey that's taking place, and that will continue to be open for anybody in the community to have input into March. But we will have some initial feedback and results from that to share at the meeting as well.
When is the, it's going to be promoted from the fountain, isn't it? The survey link?
It's actually, CT put an advertisement in Fort Thomas Living that'll be out, and we're putting it on the, we have it on our signs, and the schools are going to recirculate it as well. For, not only for it to be available online, there's also paper copies that will be available at the library, the YMCA, the city building.
So are Marky's going to promote it as well here?
It's already on there, yes.
Because we're only 300 and some participants, then, I mean, as of last, so it needs to increase. But the From the Fountain newsletter, will it be in that as well?
I don't think that'll be out before, well, I mean, it'll be out before March, but it won't be out before this meeting, I guess. But we'll be promoting that in the next couple of weeks. So we're hopeful of a couple of things. The takeaway's being, we have the meeting. It's a great opportunity for everyone to learn where all the committees are. The second thing is, the survey's still open, and you'll have some feedback from that. And it's still an opportunity to join the committees, even though there's work that's been performed. Anybody can join in at any point, and of course, moving forward is kind of a different phase, where we start doing an exploration of where things might lead. So all good stuff, so we're very encouraged by the participation we've had at the committee levels. And we're hoping that it increases and there's a continual build in the community, so...
Have you all felt good about the committees and how they're going? Everybody's been involved?
Yep.
Good, good. I read through the SWOT analysis of each of them. I downloaded that because I wanted to see how that went, because SWOT is such a unique way to look at, and I was very impressed with what I saw on there. And I had every intention of trying to attend a lot more meetings, which I never did, and then I thought, okay, I'll just sit back and watch. So I'm real excited about next week's meeting, to get caught up on it.
And again, it's a great opportunity for people to react to what's been done already, and obviously guide what takes place from that point forward, so... So really, that's all we had on that. Just the only other thing I wanted to mention was, annual reports will be before council in March and April, so they've been assigned. And I think we touched on our new police officer assignment, so we don't have anything else.
Great, thank you. Move on to old business, Dear Management Program. Sounds like the opening to a letter.
Dear Management Program. Depends on how you say it, I guess.
Yes, right.
Yes, the Dear Management, and I would really put the next two topics together, in a sense. The Dear Management Program, we've kind of dealt with the last two meetings. We have, and I reported in the memorandum that we received, kind of the input that we have monetarily from the community, thus far is around $3,600. We've been contributed to the idea of that program. Staff is still working on kind of how a program might be implemented, the timing of that, the ordinances that might be necessary to achieve that. So we are working toward having that information. And then kind of going to the next topic, we had a report the last time from Law Labor License regarding vacant property ordinance and the code enforcement options that are available to the city. We, at a staff level, feel like we'll be prepared to share that information, so a draft program for the Dear Management Program, and research and perhaps drafts for the vacant property and code enforcement issues. And those both are part of Law Labor License, so we're suggesting that we have kind of an extended meeting and deal with both those topics, if that's the will of councils, since that committee would be together anyway, and deal with both of those topics in the evening, outside of a leading to our regular council meeting, in the essence of having enough time. So we just suggested the March 5th date as a first Monday, which is an alternative meeting date for council. And of course, we could do that at any point in the evening, if that fits the Law Labor Committee, but we would advertise that as a meeting date for committee. So that's where we are with both of those topics. I'm sorry, March 5th?
No, I mean, what time?
To be determined, I mean, yeah. I mean, we could do an evening meeting, 7 o'clock, and we'd get a normal council meeting date. If that's the preference.
So that's not a reg, oh, yeah, okay, I see. That'd be good.
So we'll go ahead and advertise that and set that, and we'll deal with those topics at that time.
And have it up, and, I mean, we wouldn't have it set up, so we could, to the time it takes a little bit.
Correct.
Good.
Okay, we'll proceed with that one.
Excellent. All right, on to new business, consideration of real estate transfer agreement with Bloomfield Chan.
Included, you had a copy of the proposed agreement for terms of transfer of real estate, and this, we do have a development agreement with Bloomfield Chan, and this is really spelling out all the details beyond the existing development agreement, and very specifically kind of the vehicle for setting parameters for a sale. Obviously, we've been working toward that. They've been working toward securing a financing. This is kind of a tool that's necessary for them with regard to obtaining their financing and getting those commitments. So it's kind of the next step in that process on their end. So the document is included. Jan's had an opportunity to look at it. Again, it really, there's no changes to where we've been. It just deals with all the particulars related to an actual transfer of the property, including making references to specific exhibits and so forth, that identify the property that would change hands at the time of closing. So really, at this point, approval of that document by vote would authorize the mayor to sign the document, and it would just create definitive terms for the transfer.
I'll move approval. Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, I actually, not quite sure why they need this. I mean, it doesn't matter, but...
No, I think it's a secondary step, just to make sure that they have documents that the lending agencies are comfortable with for the transfer.
You know those lawyers, Roger? Sometimes they ask for things.
All right.
Yeah. And I know Mr. Bloomfield's in the audience. Did I speak well to the issue?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
We're just wondering why you need the agreement, what the purpose of it is.
More for the bank, for our lender, they want to see a sort of formal sales agreement.
All right.
I'm not my attorney.
There's no other questions, though? We've got a motion in a second, correct? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron, aye. Mr. Bowman, aye. Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, aye. Mr. Peters, aye. Mr. Swatter, aye.
Great, thank you all very much. Thank you. All right, consideration of bids regarding Burnt Ridge. Hold up, please.
Okay, again, attached, you have a summary. We did put this project out for bid, and as you recall, we did that previously in October of last year. At that time, we received bids that ranged from just over $145,000 up to about $225,000, well exceeding our engineer's estimate, at which time council rejected those bids. We looked at an extended timeframe, a rebidding process that gave some leeway for potential contractors. We spent time reaching out to different contractors to make sure they were aware of our project, and if they were interested, had a significant amount of time to make their bids into the process. So we were able to do that, opened bids in December 21st, and fortunately, we received much better bid through a competitor's process. Just for reference, at that time, we did extended for completion, gosh, now it's escaped me, no, hey, from me, end of June, end of July, I can't remember exactly, but it was one of those two. Basically, putting it into a construction season that's a little more suitable for the type of work that they're doing, and I think that was reflected in the bids that we received. Smith Construction is the low bid at $89,200, and you can see they ranged all the way up to about $211,000. We did have two very competitive bids in that $89,000 range. JDC Activation was the second bid. That is the company that did the remedial work in between, and stayed interested in the project, so it's not that bad of a project, because he's still interested. But Smith Construction is the low bid, it's $89,200. That is our recommendation for approval. And just a side note, Smith Construction is the same company that did our last pier project on Tower Hill. So we do have professional experience working with them, and we're completely satisfied with the work that they performed on behalf of the city previously. So we're confident that they're a legitimate contractor. So certainly, due diligence paid off in this regard to the tune of about $56,000 difference. So we certainly recommend that we move forward, just be it in that timeframe.
Ron, I have a question. Is that the same, the scope was the same?
The scope is the same.
Interesting. And the second question, you said Smith Construction did the Tower Hill work as well?
Yes.
And we had a warranty issue on that project recently? And they fulfilled their warranty obligations under that?
Absolutely, yes, they did. Yes, and, you know, that's a tough project, because you could assign them different ways, and they didn't.
Right, and then, yeah, that's good to hear.
It is good. Okay, I guess you need a motion on this? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd move to accept that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron, aye. Mr. Bowman, aye. Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, aye. Mr. Peters, aye. Mr. Swatter, aye.
Excellent, that's great. And there's no, there would be no reason to look to JDC since they did the previous work? There's no advantage to that?
No, they did it within the scope of what we had, just to do, to get us through. And they did a great job, we're very happy with it. We've also worked with them before, they're a very reputable contractor. They, in fact, did a lot of work for us on the Amity Hill project.
Oh, okay.
On some of the excavation and work up there, so...
Good.
But, yeah, that's the bid process, so they ended up second.
Excellent. All right, consideration of IAFF Local 1928 Working Agreement.
You say all that right?
You did. Very good. I've never bothered you.
You do have a memorandum that was placed in front of you this evening, that kind of outlines where we've been. And as you know, we had settled contracts with our ASME and FOP union groups at the 40th, right before the start of this one year, and those were approved in July of last year. We continued discussion with the IAFF Negotiation Group at the staff level. Got through a lot of issues, we had a lot of meaningful discussion, and we did get to a point where we have a final document that's being brought forward. We did get into, essentially, and it enumerates in the memorandum, the points of adjustment within the contract, and really, from that period of time till now, the issues that were altered included the, in the fire department, they have a 24-hour shift, and they have an overtime rate based on that shift. So that was an area where we made an adjustment for a 24-hour overtime shift, and then also giving language to give credit for lateral entry for employees that come into the fire department. We have similar language in the FOP contract, but it was never recognized in the fire department contract. So beyond the other contracts and conversations that we've had, those were really the two issues. It is a three-year contract, and again, all those items are spelled out that were involved previously, including the rate adjustments over the course of this year in the contract. And then we would also have subsequent to consideration of this, we would have a pay ordinance on our agenda for this evening. So staff is recommending approval for the IAFF Working Agreement.
So do we need a motion on this, or do we just go to the ordinance, I guess?
No, you would need motion on this to sign the contract. The pay ordinance would only be for this fiscal year.
Gotcha, okay. So I will entertain a motion.
What's the motion on?
To accept...
To accept, to authorize the mayor to sign the working agreement as indicated here.
Oh, okay, that's, I thought that was...
Somebody like to second? Okay, discussion, questions?
One question, I apologize, something very minor, it's one clarification. One thing was update safety board language to remove mandatory by annual meetings. Could you expand on that?
Yes.
Whenever I see remove safety, I'm like, I have to...
No, that's a local, we're not superseding any state or federal obligation. It was really within the language of the contract that had to do with working conditions, and it really just stated that you had to do that. The process involves, so for example, if there was a work environment issue of safety, we're hopeful that that doesn't wait to come out in a required by annual meeting. There's always the right of the employee or the employee group to approach the city, and we want to be reactionary that way. And quite frankly, we never had those meetings unless there's any, so we just were removing the language.
Good, thank you.
That makes sense. Any other questions, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron, aye. Mr. Bowman, aye. Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, aye. Mr. Peters, aye. Mr. Swatter, aye.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, we are down to Finance Committee report on dispersments.
The total of dispersments, December 29th, 2017 through January 12th, 2018. General Fund, $315,820.10. Tower Park Fund, $1,492.73. Public Works KDOT Fund, $1,736.38. Reoccurring Debt Service Fund, $1,140.58. CBD Revitalization, $455.80. Waste Fees, $89,819.42. Police and Fire Pension Fund, $2,671.23. Total, $413,136.54. We the undersigned numbers of the Finance Committee recommend that warrants number 3177 through 3320 be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue tax repayment. Mr. Peters, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member. Mr. Beasley, member.
Motion, please.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cameron, aye. Mr. Bowman, aye. Ms. Kelly, aye. Mr. Beasley, aye. Mr. Peters, aye. Mr. Swatter, aye.
Okay, a couple of ordinances, a couple of executive orders, start with it. Ordinance 01, Street Program.
Ordinance number 001, 2018, an ordinance confirming the city's engineer, the city engineer's estimate of the cost of the improvement and certificate of apportionment for the improvement of Prestus Avenue from its intersection with Washington Avenue to its intersection with Alexandria Pike, Diana Court from its intersection with Highview Drive to its terminus, Highview Drive from its intersection with Highland Avenue to its terminus, Lafayette Court from its intersection with Washington Avenue to its terminus, Lilac Lane from its intersection with Highview Drive to its intersection with Newman Avenue, and Washington Avenue from its intersection... Hy-Vee Drive to its intersection with Newman Avenue, and Washington Avenue from its intersection with Highland Avenue, with Highland Avenue to the city's corporate boundary with the city of Newport being Joyce Avenue. All in the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and all in accordance with the plans and specifications thereto, as identified by the city engineer and approved by the Board of Council, approving and leaving a special assessment against the abutting property owners and providing for its payment, directing the city clerk to publish an extractive ordinance, and directing the city treasurer to prepare and distribute the assessment bills requiring all abutting property owners to pay the improvement assessment. The special assessment rates are set out below per linear foot, and fronting unwisted streets are assessed against said real estate, and the owners thereof see attached Exhibit A, that the state of cost per foot. Custis Avenue, nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Diana Court, eight dollars and three cents. Hy-Vee Drive, nine dollars. Lafayette Court, six dollars and ninety-three cents. Lilac Lane, nine dollars and forty cents. Washington Avenue, nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
All right, that's the first reading of that. I'll move to ordinance oh-two, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Ordinance?
Two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Ordinance number oh-two, two thousand eighteen, an ordinance establishing the rates of pay of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, Fire Department employees who are members of IAFF Local nineteen-twenty-eight for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year, and fixing the manner of paying such compensation. The hourly rate of pay of the officers and the regular firefighters of the Fire Department are stated for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year. Employees will be paid at the hourly rate for the first forty hours of work each week at one and a half times that rate for additional hours work each week. In the event of a need for overtime because of emergencies, sickness, or other unforeseen conditions, the hourly rates are fixed. In the event of a need for a twenty-four-hour overtime shift, the rates are stated. The work week shall be defined as beginning at seven-thirty a.m. on Sunday and continuing until Sunday at seven-thirty a.m.
All right, that's also a first reading. Executive Order EO one, two thousand eighteen.
Executive Order EO one, two thousand eighteen, an executive order reappointing Barry Petracco as a member of the Design Review Board of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
And EO two?
Executive Order EO two, two thousand eighteen, an executive order reappointing Dan Borman as a member of the Clearing Commission of the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, and setting his term of office.
All right, two other quick announcements. There's, will be a public hearing on Tuesday, February twentieth, at four-thirty for an alcohol beverage license application. Is that correct? It's the FTTH LLC doing business as Fort Thomas Public House, fifteen North Fort Thomas Avenue. And also, on Thursday, February eighth, at seven o'clock, will be the public meeting for the Street Program for next year, and that'll be here in council chambers. But the big one, the main one, is next Wednesday at seven o'clock at the mess hall, because that's the one that's going to be really fun, so hope to see everybody there. Anything else to come before?
Actually, I do, Ron, do we know anything else about the pension situation? Yeah, update on more?
Well, the, they are in session, obviously. There is nothing definitive that's been forwarded for consideration. My understanding, there's perhaps has been these three different versions that are currently circulating in Frankfurt. One that originates from the governor's office with modification from what he proposed originally, and a couple of others that are coming out of the house and are excited. But beyond that, we only know, no movement on where that might be at this point.
Farm should be able to see, make a, stay away.
Yes, absolutely, as well than you either in that coalition, so. And obviously, we're working on budget for this week, so it'll probably be deferred into next week before July.
All right, anybody else, anything else? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.